...the agenda tonight. That's a very exciting item. I'm looking forward to it very much. The Benson Hill Community Plan. And where are we with that?
Well, thank you, Councilmember, Council President, Corman, and Councilmembers. I'm Chip Vincent from Community Economic Development. And we're here to present the Benson Hill Community Plan tonight. And doing the presentation is Erica Conklin, who worked for two years as the project manager for the Benson Hill Community Plan. And she's been gone from the city of Renton for a little over a month now. Moved on to not greener, but other pastures. Working in the community to the east of us in Bellevue. But it's so fitting, given the really, the great quality work and the effort that Erica put into managing this project, working with the community in Benson Hill, that while she works in Bellevue, her home and her heart is still here in Renton. So it's fitting to have her back here tonight to present to you the Benson Hill Community Plan. So with that, I'll introduce Erica.
Excellent, thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me tonight. It's really been my pleasure to work on this plan over the last two years and to meet so many people in the community who care so deeply about the future of Benson Hill. So by way of introduction, the planning process has been two years of engagement, visioning, and plan refinement. That's a little bit longer than we usually take for community plans. But it was very important that we spent a lot of time on that engagement and visioning so that we knew that we were hearing from as many voices in the community as possible. It guides the direction of future changes and investments that the city can make in that area. And it also is a very important tool in strengthening relationships between Benson Hill and the city of Renton. The other thing that we noticed is that Benson Hill really is a community of separate neighborhoods. And there hasn't always been a unifying theme. And so this helps a lot. A little bit of background about the Benson Hill. There's seven public schools there. There's some infrastructure, but kind of as a legacy of development from King County Development Standards and a patchwork of standards over the years. There's a lot of missing links in that infrastructure. And there's also some community amenities that are missing in high-density areas. So one of the things that we do know it's rich in is strong and diverse neighborhoods. Like I said, they're a little bit socially disconnected from each other, but within the neighborhoods themselves, they're extremely strong with rich connections. There's great views up there. And there's also a number of trails and recreational connections up there that people have been using for some time. However, there's no real center of Benson Hill. And the few places that have been centers in the past are pretty uninviting right now. So what we know about the existing conditions in Benson Hill is that there are some equity issues. Not everyone has the same access to parks and recreation or to non-motorized transportation. People are looking for that unified vision, that unified theme that's going to bring Benson Hill together. One of the ways that they really want to do that is by creating a community heart or a community center. That's going to be a place that'll draw people from all over the area. And non-motorized ability, the ability for adults and for children to move through the area freely and safely is very important. So a little bit about our community engagement. We started our community engagement with a steering committee. And that steering committee was composed of people that we had talked to through some outreach at neighborhood picnics and other events. We also got some recommendations. We had two open houses, three online surveys. We had this really great interactive website where people could comment on blog posts. There was an interactive map. We used social media to connect with people. And we went to so many neighborhood events over two years. We went to every neighborhood picnic. We did movies in the park. We really went to where people were already gathering to try and get their input. And of course, as we always do, we coordinated with our interdepartmental team of city staff. So the vision. Well, first of all, we, one of the things we did through social media is that we ran a contest. And we asked people to really give a tagline for the Benson Hill community. And so Jason and Amy Jones, who live in the Cascade area, they had the winning entry. So the tagline for Benson Hill is Benson Hill. Things look good from here. And I think that that really does sum up the vision. And people recognized that, which is why they chose it. So the three aspects of vision are number one, to create a focus; number two, to improve connections; and number three, to build community in all kinds of ways. Through physical amenities like parks, by improving the feeling of safety, and also to have social outlets and activities, build those social connections. So for Community and Economic Development, we really looked at how do we create a community focus in the heart of Benson Hill? One way was to attract people through recreational opportunities. Now, the Cascade Shopping Center is a pretty large piece of property, and it's currently underutilized. And so there's a variety of short- or long-term options for that site. In the short term, there's some different ideas that were floated around about what could be done. But the Cascade Neighborhood Association actually has been working really hard on turning that green space at the Cascade Shopping Center into an amenity for the community. So one of the things was to have a walking path and a picnic area there. A lot of people come in through the spring and the summer to use the ball fields there. And there are some people coming and going who work at the businesses there in Cascade Shopping Center. So the idea of getting some eyes on the street there and bringing more activity would help. In the long term, there's some different things that could happen. One possibility would be to transform the site into a Parks and Recreation Complex. Of course, this is a very long-term vision, but it is consistent with the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. And if you see to the left side of the screen there, there's the example community park from the Parks Plan. And those things could potentially fit onto the Cascade Village site. Of course, that's a very long-term investment. And some other decisions have to be made for that to happen. But in terms of finding a large, pretty vacant site, it's a possibility. It's also important to encourage a healthy business environment there. And so we have some principles in the plan that look at how we're going to encourage that healthy environment. One would, one thing would be some visual improvements. And also, supporting businesses. If that area is going to change and transform, then however that happens, whether in one big swoop or whether incrementally over time, the existing businesses there need to be supported. One of the great things about the Cascade Shopping Center is that it really provides a way for, like a, almost like a business incubator. So businesses right now at the shopping center, the types of businesses that are there, they're moving out of garages. They're new businesses, just expanding. And that's actually a very valuable resource to have in our community, is that place for people to build their business to the next level. It would also be, it would also be good to have some design guidelines. So if that area redeveloped into another business use, design guidelines to ensure that it meets the community plan. Multimodal transportation. I talked a little bit in the existing conditions about how there's a trail system. There's lots of different utility corridors and all, and little connectors and all kinds of interesting ways that people connect through this community. And we could really build on that to create a very functional network. One of the things would be to take 116th and make it, as one person called it in our outreach, the jewel pathway of Benson Hill. When you look at 116th, it's really the only major north-south connecting road except for, except for 108th Benson, or you know, Benson Highway area that runs right along the edge of the study area. But in terms of connecting the north and south side, it's very difficult because along Petrovisky, there's quite a bit of topography. There's some sensitive areas. And so 116th is the, is the one place that connects the community. Expanding the trail network, improving some neighborhood streets, and also improving the environment for transit riders and as well as making some improvements for drivers. On our interactive map here, we had an interactive map. And then we took a, an old-fashioned paper copy when we went out and did our outreach. And people identified all kinds of improvements. Things that had to do with inadequate street lighting. Maybe it was a spot that they didn't think was very safe because they, it was hard to pull out or there were missing sidewalks, whatever it was. And actually, even before, you know, while we were doing this plan, our Transportation Department got a hold of this list. And they've already started working on the things, either where they can, they're already doing other projects so they can add little improvements on, or they're analyzing some of these issues to see if they can make safety improvements. So big kudos to our Public Works Department for really responding to people's needs and responding to the community. Parks Recreation and Natural Areas. It's really interesting. I think in the city of Renton as a whole, people enjoy really great access to parks and recreation. It's one of the things that makes the city of Renton really a great place to live. The legacy of King County is that, in the Benson Hill area, is that the areas that were longstanding parts of Renton are very well-served. And the areas that were more recently annexed in the last five years are poorly served. So, and, and many of those areas are concentrations of families with children and also concentrations of density. So the number-one recommendation was also consistent with our Parks Plan, which is we need to rejuvenate and enliven the facilities that we have now. Maintain our existing parks. Make sure that we have programming for youth activities. This, I believe this Tiffany Park building, which is, community building which is shown here, the city has already made an agreement with a local community organization to run an after-school program there. And the other thing is, is that when you look south of the Petrovisky area, there's really almost no Parks and Recreation opportunities except for the connection to the Seuss Creek Trail, which is outside of city limits. Strong, livable, and safe community. We heard over and over again that people thought that Benson Hill was a great place to live and a great place to raise a family. But there were some concerns about the sense of safety up there. So some of the plan recommendations include continuing partnering with the police. People have really noticed in the time since annexation the difference of having very active problem-solving policing up in that area. And they want to continue with that. Also, to encourage the type of development that hinders crime. The current layout, for example, of some of the commercial areas, including the Cascade Shopping Area, really doesn't follow a lot of the principles of crime prevention through environmental design. There's, you know, blank walls where there should be eyes on the street. There's some parking lots in weird places. And so continuing with those types of programs that we already have would be very helpful. But more than that is the idea of supporting a very strong and vibrant community here. And these are a little bit, this is a little bit has to do with making social connections. And this, this can sometimes be challenging to us because it, well, we all know it's not that easy just to build a new park or something like that. But when we think of, you know, physical, making physical things, those are things that we can see in the community. And, and those make a certain type of measured improvement. But really, the sense of community that people get from talking with one another and being with another, having those social connections, it's very interesting. In places like New Orleans or Detroit, they've found the neighborhoods that have been most able to survive, you know, physical and economic crises, those have been the neighborhoods that had the most social connections and the most social resilience. And people are very interested in building that in the Benson Hill. So one of the things is that this plan suggests creating a community plan advisory board. We created one with the city center plan. And so this would be a continuation of that. Also sponsoring local activities in the area that create connections. I think our neighborhood programs done a very good job of that, the work that they've done up there already. So, oh, I went the wrong way. Some other things would include building the capacity of residents. What we do know is that there's a large and growing population of immigrants that live in the Benson Hill. And with, with immigrant communities, there's always opportunities to have skills training and put them in contact with social services. There's also a fair number of people who are living in poverty up there. I didn't, I know I've given a presentation on that stuff before to the committee of the whole. But it, so I didn't include that in this presentation today. But it is interesting when you look at the demographic maps. There's pockets of poverty. There's pockets of immigrant communities. Those aren't necessarily the same pockets of people. And so there's lots of different issues up there where people need maybe a little extra, a little extra assistance to be successful. We also heard that people wanted faster internet. They were interested in undergrounding power lines. And we, we even notably heard from one person who said, you know, I've lived there with above-ground power lines, and my power has never gone out. I don't know if I want underground power lines. But mostly, people said that they wanted underground power. And then also cultivating a sense of pride in the community. And that really has to do with looking at some ways that we can improve the aesthetics of that neighborhood, of those neighborhoods. Design guidelines would help. And possibly a cleanup program. I think that the neighborhood program has done a good job working with the Cascade Neighborhood Association to run a neighborhood cleanup program. And there's also some gateway intersections that could be improved. Either by adding gateway features or, for example, in the case of 116th and 168th in the Cascade neighborhood, there's some unsightly containers and things in that area that people would like to really clean up, maybe make it a little more beautiful, add some public art. So that, I feel like I talked very fast. And I apologize for talking so fast. But really, the Benson Plan is a very rich plan that goes in, in a bunch of different directions. I think one of the great things about the plan is that people really want there what, what people want in any community, which is a beautiful, safe, and attractive place to live, the ability to connect with their neighbors, the ability to have outstanding facilities and services in the area. And I think it's really a credit to Renton that, I think it's to our credit that we went out and did this plan because so many people have been underserved for so long. So the next steps is that we're going to ask you to approve a committee report tonight to adopt a resolution adopting the Benson Hill Community Plan. Because it's kind of late in the year, we'll start in early 2014 looking for Benson Hill Community Plan Advisory Board members. So anybody who's watching this tonight or watching it streaming on the internet at a later date, if you think that you'd like to participate in the Benson Hill Community Plan Advisory Board, look for that around the first of the year. And beyond that, we would like to think that the advisory board is going to work with the city and the staff to build and maintain the connection that we've already done, that we've already made by doing the planning. They'll be there to advocate for plan implementation and also to update the plan and make sure it stays current. So many of the things in the plan, we already are at work on, either in Public Works or Police or the neighborhood program. And so it's important that we keep our priorities updated. And the community plan advisory board is a great way to do that.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes, well, thank you, Ms. Conklin. Questions, Ed? Looks like you've got a question.
Thank you. Erica, thank you for coming back tonight. And thank you for all your hard work on this. So I went to both of the open houses that you did. And one of the things, and you touched on it a little bit, that I heard a lot about were sidewalks. Part of the legacy of King County is that there's not a lot of sidewalks there. In fact, I think it was on your title screen, your title page, or maybe the page after, where you showed kids walking across the street.
Right.
Where there was, it looked like it was maybe a bike path on the other side of the street. There was a sidewalk. That was actually, I think, in front of a school.
It is.
Where you'll see, and because I ride my bike in the neighborhood a lot, there are sidewalks until you lead up to the school. The moment you get past the school, there are no more sidewalks. So it makes it really hard for people if they just want to go out and walk around their community, to walk around your community because you're scared you might get hit by a car or bike around your community for that sake.
Right. And in, in that particular picture, it is the route that most kids walk home from McKnight Middle School. And there is a piece of-
Nelson.
Or, sorry. McKnight, that's the other neighborhood I've been working in.
Long walk.
Nelson, yeah, very long walk from McKnight, from Nelson Middle School. And, and you can see a piece of sidewalk in that picture, but it only lasts for half a block. So of course, no one's going to go and walk on the sidewalk for half a block and then walk back in the street.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Erica, it's wonderful seeing you again.
Thank you.
And I remember those good old days in the Planning Commission. I am just so happy that we're finally, you know, getting, or we're beginning some of the implementation of some of this. And going to be delighted to move this forward tonight. I can say that the residents on Benson Hill are just more than deserving of this. All of the interactions that I've had, some of the events, picnics, et cetera. My comings and goings with the community there is that they've just been real happy to be a part of the city through the annexation that we did years ago, graciously, patiently, waiting for us to make some of these improvements. I agree with my colleague down there at the far end of the dais that, you know, sidewalks and those kinds of issues are much needed, you know, walkable pedestrian ways, biking routes and those kinds of things. And figuring out how to solve that complex issue of creating the kind of synergy and combination of services and thriving community there. The spirit is there. I mean, they've got the spirit there. We just need to help them along the way in terms of providing them with the resources. And I'm thrilled to be a part of us getting that process going. So great presentation. And thank you, Benson Hill residents, for being so patient.
Other questions or comments?
I have one more comment.
Sure.
Erica?
I'm sorry.
So you talked about eyes. You were talking about parks. Cascade Park.
Yes.
I think we've talked about that in Planning Development Committee quite a few times. And I know there's been some talk about trying to do something and get more eyes on that park. It's an amazing park.
Yes.
It's just because you, you kind of go in it and you're kind of in the hole when you get in it. It's a little scary for people to take their, and I've heard from a number of people, I don't want to take my kids there because, you know, no one can see us.
Right. So the plan, or the, we do have a strategy for Cascade Park in this plan. And it essentially is the same strategy from the Parks Plan, which is to work on the connection between Cascade Park and Tiffany Park. And then potentially, as properties become available, purchasing properties that are along the park so that the park can be opened up to be viewed from the street.
Good. Okay, other questions, comments? Dialog?
Erica, I just want to thank you. Saw you out there working so hard and appreciating the reality of the people and the situation up there. And they have been patient. But my impression is they're so appreciative of any attention that we give them that anything is, is an improvement.
Right.
And I really liked the way you put the presentation together and the plan that is in place now. I think it gives a good roadmap for moving forward as resources become available. And it seems they have the enthusiasm to jump in and help us where needed to.
I agree. And before we wind down, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the time and involvement of the members of the Benson Hill Steering Committee. And they were very instrumental in helping us design our public outreach and, and helping us to reach different parts of the community and giving us advice really that helped us craft our planning process to, to build this kind of community support.
Are some of them sitting in our audience?
Oh, I was, I was trying to look over my shoulder and see-
I think I recognize them.
Well, we do have Pam Pollak, who's also from the Cascade Neighborhood Association. But that's our only member here today. But I know that some are watching online.
Actually, there's Charles Seal, who's the vice president of the-
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought. Yes, yes. I have met Chuck before. And he's the president of the Neighborhood Association. I was trying to, Steering Committee was a different committee.
Yeah, well, thank you all for being here.
Mr. President?
Hi, yes, Ms. Brier.
Having worked with Erica on one of these before, you know, it is really a daunting task task to go through all of this. And I just ask for the patience of Benson Hill because cities don't move real quickly. And in two years, getting this done was really good and it'll take a little while for some of these things to actually happen. But what's exciting is just the fact that the community is so involved in it. And that makes things go so much more quickly and smoothly. So it's really nice to know that there was so much participation in this. And I know we'll have a nice new, or a nice updated community somewhere along the line. So thanks to them for their help and thanks to you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Ricker.
You know how much these plans mean to me. They mean a lot.
Yes.
And I really wanted to share how much, how thankful I am for your efforts on this. Thank you so much for taking the time to come back and put a bow on this. These really are going to matter in years to come, more so than I think a lot of the things that we do when it comes to dealing with the public. And thank you so much for your efforts on behalf of, I may remember the comments made by all my council members, but as Chair of the Planning and Development Committee, the committee thanks you for your time and effort on this for the last couple of years. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's been my pleasure. And I'm a resident of that area, so I get to benefit from all of that hard work.
Yeah. Now, I want to agree with all the comments that have been stated. And just for anybody watching, talk about where we are with the other neighborhoods. So we've done a downtown plan, we've done a Highlands Plan, we've done the Benson Hill Plan. All those plans have benefited from Ms. Conklin's direct involvement. But we're, I think we're not going to leave any neighborhoods out before we're all done with this, right? We've got some more plans in the works.
Yeah, that's correct. We are taking a very short hiatus, though, while we do the overall update to the comprehensive plan to meet our Growth Management Act requirements and obligations by summer of 2015. So we've funneled all of our resources over to working on that overall comp plan update effort. But once we're done with that, then we'll be back to work asking the council which communities next.
Okay, good. So those neighborhoods that hear about this and want to be involved, should people in those neighborhoods start thinking about letting the city know if they're interested in participating? Because this is really an important step. As has been said, it'll set the stage for the next, maybe two decades of work as we go forward. So, great job. And I have here a committee report and I'll just ask the committee if they're ready for me to approve it. It's quite simple. The Committee of the Hall recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the Benson Hill Community Plan as presented and to adopt the resolution.
Yep, absolutely.
Looks like we've got a consensus, so I'm going to go ahead and sign this. And with that, any final comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and adjourn the Committee of the Hall meeting. We'll reconvene in about 30 minutes. Well, okay, before I do that, I see a comment from the back of the room.
Yes, my name is Joe Volio.
Can you invite him to the mic?
Now, why don't you come up to the mic, just for legal purposes?
My name is Joe Volio and I've lived in this area since 1962 and was a member of the team that went out and canvassed the area and got the petitions to annex into Renton. And there's several things that are really amiss because I worked with the Park Department to locate the fields, to locate places where the hoodlums that are running around out there, and believe me, there are plenty of them. And everywhere I went, I got wrestled by wetlands. And I don't know how you're going to get around that or not, but there's a lot of vacant land up there and 90% of them are wetlands. And really, the only place that's got a decent field is King of Kings Lutheran Church. And there's really nothing else out there. And you're really going to have to wrestle that because I don't know where you're going to find some places for a ball diamond, for example. They're just not there unless you're going to somehow suck the water out of those wetlands.
Not sure if that'll happen, but yeah, that's a good warning. Joe, can you spell your last name for me? I know the clerk will want to know.
A-V-O-L-I-O.
Okay. O-I-O. Okay, thanks.
And, but what I suggest is, there's some places that I haven't been up there. And I think there's one of them is across the 116th to the west. It disappears back in the woodlands. And there may be a place where some ball diamonds and stuff could be put on. And I'm very disappointed in what's happened to the business district up there. A lot of vandalism was going on. I think it's one of the reasons why I never could figure out why they closed down the bowling alley. But, so if we could find some wetland or do something with the wetland and have some sports activities, get those young hoodlums--
Okay.
--interested in something besides raising cane.
Good. And so Chip, can you explain, like, as comments, the community will continue to have input. And after we get the new committee appointed, they'll continue to gather input, I presume, for this?
That's exactly the case. In fact, what Erica suggested at the end, beginning of the first of the year, we'll be soliciting for feedback from the community for interest in being involved in the Benson Hill Community Plan Advisory Board. And we really, like, this is what we call a big tent. In fact, for the City Center Community Planning Board, we have 18 stakeholders. And it's a large group, but we really want a large group that really encompasses as many views and perspectives from the community possible. So we really have a good reflection of the community's interests and priorities advancing the plan and moving forward. And so they can provide good feedback and direction to the council on which issues are important to them and which capital facilities they want to see prioritized first. So that's just the beginning of the public process with the City Center Community Planning Board. And they themselves get out and get engaged with the community as well. So it's an, it really, the community plan provides for a framework and a roadmap that really begins that dialogue and the discussion with the community as a whole as it moves forward over time.
So I think if Mr. Volio wanted to, he could even participate, right? We'd like to add your name to the list of, either as a committee member or you could attend a committee meetings and share your thoughts. And we would welcome those. Sounds like you know the neighborhood well. Very good. Thank you.
We're willing to. Mr. President, yes. Thank you for your comment. I would just say also that it's, you know, I appreciate the concern of the gentleman in wanting to find an outlet for our youth--
I agree.
--to find a positive way to become engaged in the community that they live in. I think that's a worthwhile goal. And I know that that's a part of our plan and that's part of the whole process of what we're doing. But thank you for your comment.
Good. Yes. Okay, well, thank you. And with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the Committee of the Hall meeting. We'll get back together in about 25 minutes for the council meeting. Thank you.